Good evening, everyone. My name is Mitchell Brown. I am the councilmember for the City of Columbus. And also joining us this evening is Councilmember Michael Stenziano. Councilmember, thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you for attending tonight's Public Safety Committee hearing to discuss the modification to sections of the Columbus City Code that relate to the License section of Public Safety. Copies of tonight's agenda are available at the entrance of the council chambers. Tonight, the Support Services section of the Department of Public Safety will provide information in regards to the proposed changes. I would now like to invite Public Safety Assistant Director Kate Pichati to provide a staff presentation of the proposed changes.
Good evening, Safety Chair Mitchell Brown and members of council. It is our pleasure to be here tonight to discuss the changes to the Columbus City Code, Title V regarding vehicle-for-hire, slow speeds, and parking violations. Additionally, we will be requesting changes in the terms and composition of the vehicle-for-hire and mobile food vending boards. Before we continue with our presentation, Public Safety would like to thank Mary Andrew Ginther, Auditor Dorian, and all the city council members for their continuing support of public safety in the license section. Joining me this evening to present and help answer questions are Ramona Patz, Division Administrator for Support Services, Kelly Castle, License Manager, Jenna Schicks, Licensing Supervisor, and Ralph Jones, the License Officer spearheading the prospective changes being presented to you this evening. Thank you.
Please.
Councilmember Brown, members of council, and Director Pichati, thank you for holding this hearing today in regards to several license code changes for the vehicle-for-hire industry. I want to first give a brief history. The Vehicle-for-Hire Code was first adopted around 1973. It required licensure of drivers and vehicles with inspection of taxis, liveries, and horse-drawn carriages. Included in this code was the creation of a Vehicle-for-Hire Board, which, to this day, has authority to make rules and regulations for the industry and make recommendations to the Director of Public Safety and Columbus City Council. Within the last five years, the vehicle-for-hire industry has seen a dramatic change in the way that people can choose to move around in this city. We have pedicabs now, transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft, and the expansion of the livery black car services. And now we're expanding even further with micro-transport vehicles and pedal wagons, which we're going to call quadricycles. And this will not be the end. There are other new transportation methods on the horizon. I wanted to take the opportunity to praise the Vehicle-for-Hire Board members. The Board is made up of taxi cab owners and drivers, livery owners and drivers, transportation network drivers, the John Glenn International Airport Transportation Representative, Columbus Chamber of Commerce, Greater Columbus Hotel Association, there's a city council representative, a city attorney representative, a pedicab owner, the city auditor's office representative, and several other appointed members. The new and amended code changes that are being requested today are supported by the Vehicle-for-Hire Board, and many of these changes were requested by the members. They continue to keep an open mind regarding the ever-changing vehicle-for-hire landscape, and I applaud them for their work in this area. At this time, I would like to call on License Officer Ralph Jones to cover the additions and changes to the code that we are requesting.
Please proceed.
Councilmember Brown, members of council, Director Pichati, thank you for your time this afternoon. The License section, and specifically the License Officers, have a unique responsibility...
Ralph, with the microphone a little closer for me, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The License section, and specifically License Officers, have a unique responsibility, not only to enforce, but to educate. The License section by code has the power and the duty to make rules and regulations regarding licensing procedures and issues as they affect the public health, safety, and welfare. The following categories will require a code change, a code update, or an implementation of new rules and regulations. And that's the slow speed or the loading and unloading of passengers, parking violation authority, the micro-transport code implementation, and the quadricycle. First is the unloading, loading and unloading of passengers, or slow speed. We are requesting, in addition to Columbus City Code 213304A, which states, "No person shall stop or operate a vehicle in such an unreasonably slow speed as to impede or block the normal and reasonable movement of traffic, except when stopping or reduced speed is necessary for safe operation, or temporarily for the purpose of and while actually engaged in loading or unloading passengers, or to comply with the law." Slow-speed vehicles who are actively loading or unloading passengers would be exempt from the current slow-speed violation language. And with this in mind, I was informed this afternoon that the Columbus Police still have a few concerns about the proposed language. We have a meeting scheduled, and all the parties involved will be kept up-to-date, and Councilmember Brown and Grant Ames will be up-to-dated as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have the parking violations. License officers are requesting they be granted legal authority to issue parking violations when there is a nexus to their enforcement duties. License officers are charged with protecting individuals that hold a license or permit. Parking infractions at designated mobile food vending spots and taxi stands cause a potential loss of revenue for the licensee, which in turn causes the use of other resources, whether it's the Columbus Police Department or parking enforcement. License officers are limited in their abilities to resolve this issue independently. The ability to issue parking violation tickets would not only benefit the licensee, but the city as well. And micro-transport vehicles. The Department of Public Safety put a pilot program in place commencing May 1, 2017. There has been very positive feedback via Facebook and Twitter. And there's a second sheet to this. It's still in its infancy, but the License section is committed to developing, implementing, and consistently improving strategies and procedures to ensure that a micro-transport vehicle achieves the highest practicable level of safety. The License section has adopted rules and regulations as the basis for enhancing the safety of public transportation in the City of Columbus. We will continue to work together with micro-transport owners and drivers to ensure that appropriate and adequate safety standards are in place. A micro-transport owner and driver will be added to the Vehicle-for-Hire Board. And next, we have the quadricycles. Quadricycle legislation will be implemented into the pedicab code with updated rules and regulations. Quadricycle owner licenses will expire June 30 of each year, and a quadricycle owner and driver will also be added to the Vehicle-for-Hire Board. Extended terms of the vehicle-for-hire and mobile food vending boards. Appointed members of these respective boards will have their terms extended to six-year terms and thereafter until they are replaced with a qualified member. And that's all I have.
Ms. Patz, I guess we have the benefit of having Deputy Chief Quinlan here. Would he like to speak to some of these issues? You or Deputy Chief?
I discussed it with Deputy Chief Quinlan before the meeting today. We realized that the Columbus Police Department had some issues involving the stopping, unloading, and loading of passenger slow-speed code. We spoke with Lieutenant Dopf. We had got an email from him earlier today. We have a meeting set up for Monday. They are more than willing to work with us to see if we can come up with some language that satisfies us and them. But I also understand there might be a state code issue as well. So we're going to dive into this, and we'll get back to you when we're ready to look at some language. And it's very possible that we can't do this because of state codes, so we'll look into it.
Have you had any complaints with regards to the slow-moving vehicles from the community?
We haven't had any complaints from the community. All we're having complaints from is the vehicle-for-hire drivers, the taxi cab drivers. Most of the complaints are coming from North High Street. North High Street is only going to be four lanes wide. There's a lot of construction going on in the North High corridor, so they're having, there's no space for them to pull over and drop off a fare. So what they're doing is, they're getting ticketed for stopping and letting a passenger out on the curbside if there's no place to park along the curb to do that. We have looked at numbers of citations. I know Deputy Chief Quinlan has some numbers as well. It looks like there was 335 citations issued for...
Six months.
In six months, involving this specific code. And that was the concern of the taxi cab drivers. They came to the Vehicle-for-Hire Board complaining about this issue. So we told them we would look into it. We contacted Deputy Chief Quinlan about six months ago and sort of discussing this issue with him. So we were not aware that there was concerns with the language, and we're more than willing to go back, and we'll look at it again, and we'll work with them.
And what about Coda, as far as buses?
We have not had any complaints about Coda.
No complaints at all from Coda?
No.
Excellent. Will there be a change to the taxi cab moratorium?
Not at this time. We had a vehicle-for-hire meeting last week. We had another deep discussion about the moratorium, and they feel that we should leave the wheelchair licenses available for anyone that could come up with a vehicle for those licenses. And I think the biggest impact that we're feeling is the lack of wheelchair accessibility to our riders in the city. And we're going to be working with the auditor's office. Kelly Castle and Ben Lee, the License Officer, they went to Austin to an International Association of Taxi Cab Regulator Conference, and there was a lot of positive information that came out of that about helping some of our taxi cab owners with the purchase of these wheelchair vehicles. They're so expensive, they're expensive to maintain, expensive to keep certified and licensed, that we're looking at, we're going to try to work with the auditor and try to get some more of these wheelchair vehicles back on the road.
Ms. Castle, do you have anything you wish to add?
Well, it was interesting. Our ratio is about 5% of our taxi cabs are wheelchair-accessible. Across the country, most licensing sections in municipalities are setting goals of up to 70% of their taxis to be wheelchair-accessible. Most, all of them have lifted any moratorium on wheelchair-accessible vehicles, and many of them have created accessibility funds, you know, adding a surcharge onto each regular taxi ride, for instance. Some of the car manufacturers have even gotten into providing incentives, you know, for fleets or even independent cars, if you buy from them, and make it wheelchair-accessible. So we're going to start a subcommittee, which I will head, and we're going to look at all of our different options and ways we can make this happen. It's an ADA issue, and it's a social issue, and an important one, not only for the disabled community, but as our community ages, we're going to see an increased dependence on riders.
Will there be someone from the disabled community who's going to be on the board?
Yes.
And be a part of all that?
Yes. At the last board meeting, we, the Board approved that we add a disabled person or representative thereof to the Board.
I would also consider someone from AARP, just as a thought process to addressing the fact that we have a large number of senior citizens, so something to give some consideration to.
Excellent.
Ms. Patz, again, how will you address the accessibility concerns of residents who wish to use the taxi cabs? I mean, how are you going to address that with the change that you're proposing?
Well, what we're going to do is, Yellow Cab has the largest fleet of handicapped taxi cabs right now. What we're going to try to do is do some type of marketing campaign to make sure that the public knows that there are handicap, wheelchair-available taxis out there. We're not sure that the public really knows that there are some taxis out there. The problem is, there's not that many of them. Right now, there's only 18, and we have an allotment for 30. We've had some individuals come to us to want to put some of these wheelchair-accessible vans or cars in play, but I'm hesitant to allow them to get the license until they can show me the vehicle. I mean, it's very difficult to get the vehicles. I'm afraid, I do not want them to have that license and not have a vehicle attached to it. I want to see them before we give them out. So we're going to work with the auditor's office to try to come up with this accessibility fund, to try to help them purchase some, you know, they're expensive. They're $25,000. Some of these vans are extremely expensive, even used, to try to help them to buy these vehicles so we can get more of them on the road. I think that we learned a lot from Austin. One thing we learned from Austin is that we are way, way behind the game when it comes to handicap and wheelchair-accessible vehicles, and we've got to get on the game here. We've got to do better. We've got to find ways to get more of them out there. A lot of our taxi cabs, you know, we're at the 10-year age limit on these taxi cabs, regular taxi cabs. I would love to be able to set a goal of 50% accessibility in our taxi cab licenses, but that's a lofty goal. We just have to find some way to help the independent owners and even the corporate owners be able to afford to put them on the street.
Councilwoman, if I may?
Please.
One of the things that we discovered was, it's hard to measure demand when there's no supply. So one of the things that Ben Lee and myself are going to do is start and meet with some of the disabled advocacy groups and pursue a way to at least more accurately understand what that demand is, who's using contract cars versus, you know, taxi use, so that, because we just have no way of assessing what the demand is. Right now, they have to call and make an appointment to get one of these taxis. But really, under ADA, you know, they should be able to go spontaneously to go meet a friend. And that's just simply not possible right now.
While you're in Austin at the University of Texas, did they have any particular ideas or concerns on how they do things there in Austin that we're not doing here in Columbus?
There are 49 municipalities across the country that mandate a certain percentage of accessible vehicles. And when we say wheelchair-accessible, we also want to try to include loss of hearing, you know, things in the cars, and for blind as well. And it all kind of came to a head because Uber got sued under the ADA for not having wheelchair-accessible or blind or deaf accommodations. And as an outcome of kind of those lawsuits with the TNCs, cities started to say, "We need to look at this issue too." And most cities are going to what's called a soft meter, which is a tablet, instead of calibrating a fare from a physical machine like we have. It's now been approved by NIST, and so when you go to those soft meters, there's software-based things that can allow for those accommodations for the deaf and blind.
The issue, as we look at tourism in the City of Columbus and the implications associated with individuals getting access to sporting events and for conventions, is that all part of this discussion?
Yes, along with the idea of maybe looking at a central dispatch. Right now, it's patchwork all over the city, and it's hard to only have 12 wheelchair-accessible vehicles available when there's no central place that knows where they are. So that could improve efficiencies as well.
Well, the fact that we're going to be spending the time to address the issue is very, very significant. I have some strong sensitivities, obviously, to the folks who are handicapped, and anything we can do. If I remember correctly, some time ago, we first got involved with this, Ramona, we looked at the vehicles and people got excited about it. But again, the question was the demand, and whether they were educated enough to know that they were available for them to get them around. We want them to be able to enjoy all the wonderful things that Columbus has to offer. Is anybody else? Tell me, how does this slow-speed code change impact residents with this slow speed? I guess that would be Ralph or Jen?
I think that...
Okay. When, we used to have a second shift. We worked Park Street and High Street, and we were out till after 12:00. And we constantly saw slow speed. We either had to get with an officer to address the cab drivers that they can't just creep down the street. But drivers that operate a vehicle at a slow speed can cause impatience and hostility from other drivers. They are at times distracted, and alertness decreases. Traffic in congested areas, Park Street in the short north, for example, increase, and the safety of pedestrians increases. Unreasonably slow speed impedes or blocks the normal reasonable movement of traffic, and it's unsafe. Slow-speed vehicles, in this case, the vehicles for hire, would be exempt from that, the language that we previously discussed. It causes all kinds of issues with traffic, either pedestrian or other vehicles. Everything gets backed up.
I know we have lots of activities down on, let's say, High Street specifically. Again, the complaints that would come in with regards to slow-moving vehicles and people trying to get from point A to point B, we already know we've got a parking problem, if you will, or a parking issue in that area, so all of this simply compounds. It's a good problem to have, but nonetheless, it's a problem. Jennifer?
Councilmember Brown. It also will affect residents because it doesn't just, it's not specific to the vehicle-for-hire industry. It will be for parents who are taking their child and dropping their child off in one of those zones. It will be effective for them as well. If you are, if you take your, if you take your child and drop them off at the gym, and you pull up into one of those fire lanes or just to drop them off, they would be exempt from the slow speed as well.
Yeah, and I know this isn't directly related, but I have lots and lots of concerns, and I guess, Ramona, for you and for Deputy Chief. You know, the situation in Charlottesville, when we have special events, and unfortunately, someone drove a car in and hurt a number of people and killed someone. I get concerned about the potential for those circumstances. It appears to be one thing, but it's actually something else. When we have big events going on, Jazz and Rib Fest, Red, White &amp; Boom, all of those kinds of events, I think, give cause for concern for them being adequately protected so that we don't have that kind of an issue happen here. If anybody wishes to speak to it, it's not really a question, it's more concern on my part.
I agree. I think the biggest issue here is that we did not see the big picture in this situation. And I think we are more than willing to sit down with police and figure out if this is even something that's viable. And the last thing we want to do is create more of a problem instead of trying to help a problem. And it's very possible by enacting this is causing more of a problem. If we're going to allow people to, we know why we wanted to make an amendment to this, but again, we didn't know what the backend would be, and Deputy Chief Quinlan has brought up some really valid points that we need to address. And I don't have, and I'll take all those points back to the Vehicle-for-Hire Board because they're the ones that were complaining about it. The drivers were complaining because they don't have any place to drop off anybody on North High Street. There's parking meters in construction, and there's no place for them to pull over to drop anybody off. Either it's going to be on a bus stop that they're not allowed to stop at, there's no taxi cab stands. I've discussed this with Amanda Ford, who's the parking meter supervisor or director. There's just no space in the North quadrant on High Street to allow that to happen. And she advised us several months ago that with the new construction coming, that it'll be down to two lanes, and there's no place to drop off anyone on High Street. So we're just going to have to work with police and see if we can come up with some language that'll make them happy and make us happy. If it can't, if we can't get there, we'll just keep working at it.
Yes, sir. Ralph?
Just one more thing. This will also affect passengers that come to Columbus. I've had several taxi drivers tell me that they picked up a fare at the airport, and they asked them to take them to 12th and High. They wanted to be dropped off at 12th and High. Right now, there is no 12th and High, so the taxi driver has to take them to the next closest block and drop them off. And the next thing that happens, he gets a complaint because the passenger calls in and says, "The guy took me an extra block and around the corner and dropped me off." So there's a battle, a little bit of a battle between the passenger and the driver, who's right?
Well, we want to be as welcoming as we can possibly be. Deputy Chief, do you have anything you wish to add, sir?
Thank you, Council Chair Brown and Vehicle-for-Hire Board. First of all, to answer your initial question, every part of our current planning involves strategy and tactics to deal with evolving tactics that are used to harm the public. So we're always have strategies in place to deal with that. We're using some new techniques, this fall-down OSU stadium area around there, trying those out to make sure vehicles do not become weapons. So that is part of our planning. Just real quick on the vehicle-for-hire, I'm supportive of the idea that we need some common sense approach to taxi cabs and other commerce-type vehicles trying to engage in business in the city. We need to be a welcoming city. And I've done a lot of work trying to make officers understand they need to have a balance between allowing commerce to occur and ensuring public safety. As Mr. Jones talked about, there's several things that lead to bad outcomes when there's vehicles driving slow. But the difference I make is, vehicles driving slow and causing the frustration, the aggravation that Ralph talked about, but also the loading and unloading is a separate issue to me. Taxis need to be able to stop long enough, Ubers, Lifts, other vehicle-for-hires need to stop long enough to load and unload. The frustration, I think I see on that is downtown, for instance. I see UPS and FedEx trucks all day long stopping in a moving lane to load and unload, and no one's paying any attention to them. I see a semi truck pull up with golf carts to unload for hours, unload 30 golf carts off of the back of a semi for a marathon, and taking up a moving lane. No one thinks anything of it. I see Coda buses stopping to load and unload passengers, and vehicles having to have left the center to go around them. So I see that happening all the time. So I think officers need to find a good balance between not allowing taxi cabs specifically that like to cruise and go slow looking for fares to impede traffic, but allow them language in there to load and unload and do legitimate commerce. So I support that part of it while finding the balance with the public safety side.
Councilman?
Yes, Jennifer, please.
One thing, we went to a meeting, the planning, 2018 Planning Meeting for Special Events, and we spoke of setting up taxi stands, loading and unloading zones for vehicle-for-hire at those for 2018 as part of the planning for the event. So for the Ohio State football games, a loading zone, for Red, White, and Boom, a loading zone, thinking that that might ease part of the cruising and the pulling over to the side.
Again, in the old days, people would hail a cab. Now, they use their cell phones and call for a cab or anyone else. And I appreciate Deputy Chief's concerns about people being out in the street and the issues. And I agree with you. I've been on High Street, and I see trucks stopping and unloading, and people have to try and drive around. And then we have the unfortunate circumstance of people jaywalking on our streets and posing other potential problems for citizens. All of that, I think, plays into this whole entire scenario. So it's, we've got to look at it very, very circular in a variety of different ways trying to solve this problem. You solve one, but you're going to create another, so if we take the time to look at that, we'll help minimize that problem. Yes, sir?
Councilmember, if I can, just back in about 2007, I was on a planning commission for valet zones and taxi zones. And we tried in the Park Street area, I believe you were down there at the time, setting up signboards and requiring them to go over to Armstrong to actually pick up and drop off, and it failed completely. Just the cab drivers just simply would not follow the pattern. Just there was, as hard as we tried, there was nothing we could do to get them to go to the cab stands. They wanted to pick up as they were flagged over, and they wanted to drop off where somebody says, "Hey, I want out here," they stopped and let them out. So we've tried that in the past, and it just did not work. In fact, we had posted signs, we actually had taken them down. But just again, as a real quick perspective, 335 citations from January 1st to June 1st. From January 1st to today, I called the clerk's office, and there were about 183,000 citations issued. So it's a very small number. It's not real widespread. There's not a lot of citation being issued for slow speed, but there were several of those that were issued for slow speed. Also had an OVI driver in it, where it was on the freeway, one involved a wrong-way driver. About a third of them involved some other type of moving violation. So they're not just all cab drivers. There are other public safety interests... There are other public safety interests to be concerned with.
I would say to Administrator Pats that in the evaluation process, you at least acknowledge that back in 2007, this issue was looked at, addressed from that concern, so that it is as inclusive as we could possibly make it. How successful has this micro-transit program been?
It's, it's actually been more successful than I think even they thought it was going to be. It's been a joy. We go down periodically to ride them, and obviously, we inspect them. And we periodically, I think, all of the licensed officers, or almost all of them, and myself included, have gone down at different events and hopped a ride on them. They're wildly popular. They had over 6,000 rides when we last checked with them back in July.
In three months.
And that's from like May 1st to the end of July, which surprised us. They had one incident between both companies where someone was intoxicated and was refused to ride. They had zero injuries occur, no traffic accidents occur. So, from all the, the feedback and surveying that we've done, it's, it's very popular among riders, and the drivers are, are very happy. They're, they're saying on average, they're making between $12 and $20 an hour in tips.
Are they required to be seatbelted in? Are they?
Yes, yes. I will say, Councilmember, or Councilman Brown, that they use the back roads. That was part of the pilot program, is that they stay off of High Street as much as possible, and I think that it has helped ease some of the traffic and the parking issues because they will go and pick people up. They have regulars already. They have been requested to operate down at Ohio State where, for the hospital, so the people who park far away could take the vehi, you know, that vehicle. They want one stationed there. But it has helped the parking problems on High Street in the short north because people can park outside of that area, catch the hopper cart in, and have them take them back only on the back roads, so that the traffic has eased a little bit as well.
Even at our night games, which obviously, the transportation patterns are altogether different, for Ohio State, they've been using the, the micro-transit vehicles. Has that worked out well?
It's also worked out well for elderly people who, you know, I, I know they were requested at Muirfield, and another, maybe it was the Irish Festival in Dublin, in their primary use for that because the parking lots are kind of far away from the actual event, event, and they didn't have shuttles. So, they were doing that a lot, which we didn't anticipate that, and we didn't anticipate the number of employees who would begin to utilize it on a regular basis, and we have seen a lot of that.
Very good. I would change the code to add regulations of pedal wagons mitigate concerns with the public safety on High Street. There was those vehicles, quadricycles, I think Mr. Jones referred to them. First, they're not seatbelted in, and are they consuming alcohol on the vehicle?
Yes.
And I would suspect that there has to be some concerns about somebody falling off and getting hurt, though we, to my knowledge, have not had any real incidents.
It came to our attention through the Short North Alliance, some phone calls about rowdy behavior, you know, drinking, this, that, and the other thing. I then talked to Deputy Chief Quinlan to see if they had had any incidents that he was aware of, and they, they had not. Then we met with the owners of the company. They operate in Cincinnati, Dayton, and Columbus. The owners actually have been extremely cooperative. They want to be licensed. Cincinnati regulates and license them, licenses them. Dayton currently does not, but is looking at possibility of doing that. Quadrecycle, they actually helped to write the code in state law that defines a quadrecycle. They are working with us to establish who is going to be qualified, for instance, to do their mechanical inspections, because no one else has asked for that, and we feel that at least, you know, we do a cursory inspection to make sure the brakes are working and, and lights and helmets available and that kind of thing. But with all our other Vehicles For Hire and our pedicabs, we get an actual mechanical inspection, and, and we'd like to have that in this instance, and they're going to work with us to find someone to provide that. So, from a, a mechanical and a cursory inspection that we do to make sure everything's working on it, that will help with, certainly with, with public safety. And, you know, requiring insurance will help passengers down the road, et cetera. And we've told them very clearly, if you incur your own complaints or what have you, that's on you. You have to follow your own rules. To that end, because frankly, we were skeptical, we sent one of the licensed officers out who actually went on a pedal wagon off-duty.
Thank you.
And she actually had her cellphone and videotaped it. And the guy in the videotape went down through all the rules in a really clear, articulate manner with all the passengers, and we brought that back and showed the Vehicle For Hire Board, which was pretty informative. We haven't heard of any craziness. She said that she didn't witness any thing, you know, extraordinary, but those can always happen.
Councilmember Brown, this, what's strange about this, you asked about alcohol. Yes, there is alcohol being served on these quadricycles. And how this works is there's a state code that was created to allow this type of behavior to occur. I don't have the state code right here with me. That's what the research showed, that they help create this ability to be on this quadrecycle. What happens is the group names one person to be the bartender. They bring all of their own alcohol. It's in a cooler, and the person sitting, standing in the middle of that quadrecycle is the one that serves everybody that's sitting on the outside of the quadrecycle. So, that's how this works. It's protected by state law. We found the code for it. We couldn't believe it either, but it actually is in the state code. So, that's one of the, and of course, we are going to have to create rules and regulations for this specific type of Vehicle For Hire, using their own rules that they have and what the state code outlines as well. So, that's how it works, is a group rents it, rents this thing, and there's two different tours you can take. One's like a bar hop, and one is just like a scenic tour. They bring all their own alcohol in their own cooler. A person stands in the middle and serves all the other parties.
And they, they do have a limit on how much alcohol they can bring. It's a very strict limit.
Sure, they do. The limit, that's right.
It's written down somewhere.
Yeah. Again, part of my concern with that only would be the issue of how are they secure? I see, I see these folks on the bike unit, whatever, the quadrecycle, and if they are consuming alcohol and they're pedaling, and I just, again, no one's fallen off and gotten hurt, but I, I don't know if they're secure in any particular way. I, that's, that's an issue for me to be aware of.
I don't think there's seatbelts. They're, they're required to have helmets for every passenger, if the passenger wishes to wear it. But as for seatbelts, I don't think there's any seatbelts.
They, they have helmets available for them if they choose to wear them?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to be working on the rules for all that, right?
Yes, we are. As soon as this is enacted, we'll be working with the companies with the rules and regulations.
They actually have seven of them in the City of Columbus operating.
Yeah. Well, I've, I've seen them, and I just stood back and watched, and then I was going to call, you know, Deputy Chief Quinlan, but I, okay, I'll, I'll deal with that differently. Thank you for answering all my respective questions. At this time, we'll take public comment. I will call the name of the individuals that filled out a speaker slip in the order at which they were turned in. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please share your name, address, and any organizations you represent before you begin your statement. At this particular time, we have Mr. Jeff Kates. Please share your name and address and any organization you represent, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Kates. I'm president of Columbus Yellow Cab. I live at 288 East Gay Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council. Appreciate all the folks from the License section, Deputy Chief. And so, I'm, I'm here discussing the moratorium.
Okay.
And how that can be looked at, hopefully, in an open-minded way. I think Kelly mentioned that they were down in Austin recently, and there's a need for more taxis, and they saw that they had an open opportunity for wheelchair-accessible vehicles, for sure, and that was something that we were considering also. If you, we have to do that for all the taxicabs. We just need to have an open moratorium for all the taxicabs. Otherwise, we run the risk of picking, of allowing legislation or rules, codes, to pick the winners and losers of, in the, in the marketplace. There's, our city is growing so fast, and we've got to be able to keep up with the demand, and there's no way to do that. Right now, I think there's 530 licenses that the city has approved for use in Columbus, same number we've had for a number of years. There's thousands of other options available to our consumers, and we all want to compete, and we all want to offer the best service to everybody. We can't do that if we're limited on the number of vehicles we can put on the street to compete, and we're, and it, and it also creates this kind of arbitrary value to a license that makes it more difficult for somebody to choose a taxi license as a means of providing Vehicle For Hire.
Ms. Pats, would you wish to respond at all?
Well, Yellow Cab, Morgan Kaufman sits on the Vehicle For Hire Board. He works with Jeff. There's been a lot of discussion in the Vehicle For Hire Board about moratorium. This is an ongoing conversation that we have monthly, and everybody kind of has mixed views on the board. Some wish to not have a moratorium, as Jeff feels, and other members feel that we should just leave it at 5:30. We've had many discussions with city council in the past about opening up the moratorium. Some of the members are very concerned about that, basically flooding the market with taxicabs, and they wanted to keep it at the current number. It's, I see both sides of this issue. I see the reason why they'd like, they would like to open up the moratorium, but I also see the other side, the other argument from the other members is that, well, if you open it up, then we're going to start losing money, and they complain about not making enough money now. But we're also looking at thousands of transportation network company vehicles that are riding around our city every day, taking riders around. I think the demand is there, so it's kind of, it's, like I said, Kelly said earlier, we don't know, really don't know what our demand is, and I think that's why a central dispatch is so important, because we're going to know what our demand is, but we're not going to be able to get the transportation network companies into that central dispatch because they have their own software that they dispatch with. So, it's, it's a balance. It, you know, I've been work, on this board for nine years, and it's an ongoing discussion. I see both sides. Some are very, very passionate about one side, and some are passionate about the other. And, you know, some of the licensed officers have been doing this for a long time. Ralph's been doing this for over 20 years. He's seen all kinds of trends come and go. But I have to agree with Jeff that the city, the city is growing. I wouldn't say by square, square miles, but definitely by population, and the city's becoming more and more attractive to millennials. I see less and less of our, our aging population moving south. I mean, the trend is for people to stay put, renovate the house they're in, use what the equity they have. So, I think that the dynamic in Columbus is changing. We're attracting so much technology, so many technology companies. The, the demand is there. Ridership demand is there. We just don't know what it is because we don't have the ability to gauge it. But this moratorium issue is an ongoing discussion, and it's split down the middle on the board.
You're not going to have council have to make the decision, are you? That's not being something I would enjoy doing. But I, I think it's a good problem. It's one of those problems that simply reflects the growth and changes in our city. And as we welcome opportunities for the Yellow Cab and for the other entities that are involved in transportation, how do we try and make it reasonable for the customer, for the consumer, for the citizen? Yes, where tourism has become very, very significant in the City of Columbus. People want to get from point A to point B as quickly and as reasonably and as cost-effectively as possible. We've got to look at all those options, and with additional potential hotels, all of that's going to come into play. And I know whenever there's an Ohio State football game, evening or night, or daytime, it's an issue, and people want to park their cars here and get there, and then get back. So, I welcome the opportunity for all of you to figure it out and give me a solid suggestion on how to handle it. Mr. Kates, is there anything else, sir?
Uh, no. The whole thing, our whole business is contingent upon the ability to have an open moratorium on the number of vehicles. Our, I guess, the last comment that I'll make is, you know, consumers are out there, they've got choices, and they're looking at their apps. They're seeing who can respond quickly, who can, and they want, they're expecting the vehicle to come to them. We talk about some of the taxi stands and stuff like that, but the competition has changed, the landscape has changed. And, and so, they're expecting the vehicles to come to the customer's location, wherever that might be, and they're looking on their app. Who can respond in the quickest amount of time? You need a large fleet of vehicles to satisfy the consumer's needs. If they look on an app and they say, "Oh, there's enough, this is only 10 minutes away," and then they look on our app and they say, "We only have, we have fewer cars, and we're 15 minutes away," they're never going to pick us. So, we want to compete. We want the opportunity for the consumers to have all the options that they have, that they should have, and we just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to service Columbus.
Well, I appreciate that, and it's going to be an interesting discussion you guys are going to continue to have on subject matter. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Also, hopefully, I pronounced this correctly, Mr. Albatru Aywas? Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and your address and any organization you represent, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I just come to, thank you, City of Columbus, and cheer. I have a problem, you know? My problem is I drive night, Friday night and Saturday night. I got a big problem last time. I went to the court. The judge, she told me, "You have to go to the City of Council Calum," you know? She said, "I cannot do anything because of, I got a customer, she's going 1175 North High Street. The police officer, he was standing there. The lady, she said, "Stop here. This is my address." I look at it, it's nighttime, you know? And then I look at this address, I stop her, I drop her off. He just come to me, "Why you stop?" I told him, "I'm dropping off her." He said, "No, you cannot stop here," he said. "Why not?" She told me that, and she's drunk person. I'm not going to drop her wrong address, you know? If I drop her a wrong address, it's going to be a big problem for me. Wanting City of Columbus, you know, they going to be, rebooked my license, you know? I told him that. He said, "No," and then he gave me a ticket. After he gave me a ticket, I went to court, I talked to her, the judge, she said, "I know you're frustrated. You're right, you cannot drop her wrong address," she said. You know, I tried to drop her next block, there is construction zone, next blocks, all the way down to Lane Avenue was construction zone. We cannot park on right-hand side. If you, I keep going, she's going to be mad on me, you know? That's why that time I stopped for her, and he gave me a ticket. We need to have, you know, drop-off time and pickup time. We need to have that, please. That's why I came to here to speak out this. We get, I get frustrated, you know?
I can imagine the frustration, but we have two people who can help try and address that issue of your frustration, in Administrator Pats and Deputy Chief. And I think before, I mean, in the close of this meeting, to have an opportunity to discuss with both of them the circumstance, because also, it's important to make sure the courts are aware of the situation in which we're trying to deal with, so that it doesn't put you in an embarrassing situation, and certainly, the customer doesn't have to walk whatever the distance may be to get to their house because they can't stop at their location. Would that be reasonable, sir? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pats and Chief Quinlan, would you please make, take an opportunity to speak with them? Thank you. Who thought taxis would be such an easy task to deal with in transportation? Thank you all for our Thank you all for being here this evening. In closing, I'd like to thank Assistant Director Pashati. She had such a fun time doing this, I could tell. Administrator Pats, Deputy Chief Quinlan, Ms. Castle, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Shin. I would like to recognize my staff, Denise Foster-Friend, or Denise Friend Foster, I'm sorry, Grant Ames, John Oswald, for their assistance in preparing for this evening's hearing. Following tonight's public hearing, our city council staff and Department of Public Safety will draft ordinances to include the proposed changes in the city code. This ordinance will then be presented to my council colleagues for approval. If members of the community have any further questions or concerns, please feel free to contact the Department of Public Safety at 614-645-8210, or my office at 614-645-4605. Finally, I would like to thank the community for their engagement in tonight's proceedings. This concludes tonight's Public Safety Committee hearing. Everyone have a good evening. Good night.